And so tonight's meeting is the October 28th, CDB Dyna Planning Commission, October 28th, 2020, for posterity's sake. We're conducting it by Zoom in accordance with the, you know, public health issues that we've been facing. We have two public hearings tonight which regard variances for residential properties. And so what we do for anyone who's watching is people can watch, you know, we'll have, the staff will present, the applicant has an opportunity to present, and then we can have a public hearing on that matter. Anyone who wishes to speak can get, can call in and get up to three minutes to speak about the matter. I'll give a phone number at the time, aligned with the conference ID and other instructions. You'll be placed into a queue. You have up to, again, you'll have up to three minutes. We, we do not have a community comment portion of tonight's meeting. Being conducted by Zoom, that's where you can just comment anything in general related to planning in Edina, or land use, or Planning Commission, wheelhouse. We are not having that. So that's kind of what we're doing tonight. Liz, Ms. Olson, would you be, would you take role for us?
Can I speak to my phone?
Oh, soft, your voices.
Sorry. Can I speak to my phone? Can I, can I spell? Can you hear me?
Liz, you're, you're going in and out a little, actually.
Can you hear me loud? Can you hear me?
Barely.
Sort of.
Sorry. I'll call, I'll call when I will figure out. Commissioner Stroh?
I think that's me. I hear. It's soft.
Commissioner Agnew?
Present.
Commissioner Miranda?
Here.
Commissioner Bennett? Commissioner Collins? Here. Commissioner Barubi?
Here.
Karen Emmerich?
Here. Thank you, Liz. It might be a technical thing, more than, more than a human thing. I think you were doing everything you could. There might be something technically interrupting. Anyways, thank you very much. So we've all received the agenda for tonight's meeting. Can we get a, does anyone have any, are there any changes to the agenda?
I have one major, I'm, I'm sorry, I meant to say minor, correction. Scott Bousin of Great Neighborhood Homes. The, the last name is spelled incorrectly.
Are you talking?
It might be, is it Great Neighborhood, or is it Great Neighborhoods? I know the last name is incorrect.
Bousin is B-U-S-Y-N. That's for the minutes from the previous meeting? Right? Is that what you're talking about, Sheila?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I'm jumping ahead. You were asking about the agenda, right?
Oh, it's nice to keep things moving, you know? Let's keep it moving here. But on the agenda, does everyone, any changes to the agenda, major or minor?
They're there.
Can I, we get a motion then, perhaps? Want someone to make a motion?
Move to approve the agenda submitted.
Second.
Liz, could you, thank you, Jerry and Lou. Liz, could you do role? And everyone for watching, just, just, I should also mention, you know, because of the online nature of the meeting, we're going to do a lot of roll votes. We can't just do a all say aye or all say nay. We, we have to, so we have a clear recording. We have to do these roll votes, and you're going to have, you're going to see us do it several times. Liz, sorry to interrupt you.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Still soft.
Okay. I will call in for a few roll calls. Commissioner Stroh?
Here.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
I think that's I.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Karen Emmerich?
Aye. Thank you, Liz. And then that takes us through the minutes. We, we do have the two changes from Commissioner Barubi regarding the spelling of the last name Bousin and the name of the company, Great Neighborhood Homes. Are there any other changes for last week's or last meeting's minutes?
Any motions?
I move to approve the minutes with the changes by Commissioner Barubi.
I second.
Liz, why don't we try the roll again?
Thank you. Commissioner Stroh?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Karen Emmerich?
Aye. Thank you. Well, let's see here. That takes us, I believe, to our public hearings. And we have two public hearings, as mentioned before. The first one is basically two variances for a home at 4909 Bywood West. And presenting for the city is Assistant Planner Chris Socker. Hello, Chris.
Hello. Thank you. Can everybody see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, this is variances requested for a tear down rebuild at 4909 Bywood West in Edina. There are two variances that are required for this project. One is a relief from the requirement for at least a 50% basement underneath the first floor. And the second variance is to increase the first floor of the new home 2.3 feet above the elevation of the existing home. So it would require 1.3 foot first floor height variance. The subject property, it consists of two lots. It's the lot here with, there's a home with an in-ground pool built in 1960, and the property also consists of a vacant lot that's behind, which accesses off of Interlocken Boulevard. The existing structure will be removed and be replaced with a new home, an in-ground pool, a sport court, and then a detached garage will be on the vacant lot that currently, that will access off of Interlocken. The property is subjected to, it is an area of localized flooding, so it is subjected to floodplain rules. The current house is, the basement is below the flood elevation. Actually, to have a full basement where the property would require that the basement be approximately at the level where the grade is right now. So the engineering department is allowing that the structure have a storm shelter, which would be at an elevation of 900, which would then require floodproofing. The storm elevation or the first floor elevation would be elevated in order to accommodate the storm shelter at a 900 elevation. The flood elevation is at about 905.7, which again is about right where the grade is currently. So both of the variances are being requested based upon the fact that it is in this low point. The homes on either side are elevated much higher. They're, the property is in a bowl. It is within the flood elevation currently. They're trying to bring it up to first floor to accommodate that small storm shelter. The rest of the property, or the rest of the house will be, will not have a basement. So that is the lower level, the main floor, and the second floor of the house. This would be the front elevation of the house now. They are bringing up that first floor. It will be still two feet lower than the first floor of the homes on either side, so it still will be at sort of a lower elevation as it relates to the streetscape currently. But they are going to be maintaining an overall height that is at the maximum 40 feet as measured from existing grades. So they're not asking for a variance for overall height. It just has to do with that first floor elevation, which would actually bring it up to the floor levels of the homes, or closer to the floor levels of the homes on either side, which are actually a little bit higher. So this is the rear elevation, side, garage side elevation. And then this is a rendering of the house in context with the homes on either side. It's, it's bringing that first floor up, so it's going to be a little bit lower than what is currently existing on either side. So staff does recommend approval of the request, given that they are trying to comply with the floodplain requirements. They are going to be allowed a small storm shelter. In so doing, they do need to raise that first floor so that, so they have an ability to have a habitable storm shelter. The neighboring homes on either side have first floor elevations that are about two feet higher than what the finished floor elevation will be of the proposed home, so it will fit in well with the surrounding neighborhood. All aspects of the home conform to the other requirements, with the exception of that first floor elevation and the fact that they would be having a storm shelter instead of a 50% basement. With that, I will stop. Staff does recommend approval of the variances based on the plan submitted. I believe the property owners are present. If you have any questions, I stand for questions.
Thank you very much, Assistant Planner Socker. Let's start there. Does anyone have questions for Commissioner Bennett? I thought I might hear from you tonight.
Well, yeah, I think Chris is sitting for questions. I just wanted to correct her there. That's it.
All right. Does, does anyone have questions for the city right now? Thank you, Jimmy. I, I have one, I may have one or two, but anyone else? I do have kind of high-level questions. First of all, I, the engineering memo on this, Jerry, Commissioner Strauss, do you have a question?
Yeah, I, I think it's obvious. It's for Chris. So the flooding, the, the concern for possible flooding is the pond which we see in the back. I mean, is that, does it not have an outlet? Is that, or is there, is, is that the flooding origins? I mean, it's sort of, is that pond fills?
Actually, I'd be more comfortable if Ross Fitner answered some of these questions. He has worked very extensively with the property owners' engineers to try to come up with a solution for this property.
Yeah. Hey, Ross, before you go, that was one of my main questions, too. This is an unusual application in that we have a 73-page engineering memo mostly dealing with these issues. Usually, we get one or two or three pages. So Ross, while you address Jerry's question, can you also give us a, just kind of explain the memo itself and kind of where you, you know, your thinking or your consultant's thinking?
Sure. Chair, Planning Commission members, my name is Ross Fitner. I'm the Engineering Services Manager with the city. I just wanted to start off by saying we support this application in its current form. Prior to its current form, we had some disagreement, but we've worked through those issues, and we are proud to support this one today. So the nature of the issue is that the basin just to the south and west of the planned structure is landlocked, and it doesn't have a natural outlet. So it's sensitive to additional flow from either grading and direction of flow, or additional impervious surfaces. So in coming to the application that's in front of you today, we had to clarify some of our policy because this is definitely a tough site. So we've done that, and we wanted to do it in a way that kept the record from those deliberations in the document, so it didn't come to you, you know, having all that taken out. So that's the reason for the large memo. I want to thank the applicant and their engineer for the time that they took and the deliberative nature that they took to get through and to make sure that they were both reducing the exposure and the vulnerability of their own home to flooding, but being sensitive to the nearby neighbors to make sure that there wasn't any additional risk that they were pushing off onto others.
Thanks, Ross. I'm wondering if you just, you know, maybe dive a level deeper in the memo and maybe just kind of explain what it, what it, you know, a little education kind of, you know. Again, it really, it's striking how much different than usual this memo is. So maybe if you could kind of educate us what it actually is in there and what the conclusions are.
Sure. I've got it up on my other screen here, so I'm turning to the side to go through parts of it. The grading was at issue during the reviews. We wanted to make sure that the grading didn't direct additional water to the low landlocked area. And to the extent that it did, the applicant chose to mitigate that additional flow that was heading to the low area. So they propose a series of large underground chambers that will be under a sport court. Another issue was the natural overland overflow is to the northeast rather than to the west, which is proposed. And that change in potential high-flow overflow, we wanted to make sure it was protective of the neighboring and downstream properties. So that was another issue that we went through. We talked about the floodplain development standards, and the policy that we had in our SP 003 document and our Conference of Water Resource Management Plan sets low-floor standards. That was one of the main issues with setting the low floor of this home. So we determined that the storm shelter, as it's shown in its revised, is actually outside of the sub watershed that drains to that landlocked basin. And the applicant suggests new, or standards using FEMA document Technical Bulletin 10-01 to talk about how to make sure that that structure doesn't, isn't vulnerable to flooding. They took specific information for soils and groundwater to make sure that they were checking their math and that they weren't building into a groundwater issue. And there were some technical elements of that bulletin. That includes the maximum size of this shelter. So they were under that. And then we spelt out our conditions that we were willing to accept this application in, and that's the section, the final section, or the final part of the floodplain development section of the memo. So while the application in front of you today is in a different form, and it's one that we support, it does meet all of those requirements that we spelled out in, in this memo.
Does anyone have further questions for the engineering staff? I have one further question. I don't know if it's for you, Ross, or for Chris, or for the applicant, but maybe I'd like to start with the city representatives. And that is, so if I look at, if I look at the document that we received called 4904 Bywood Site Location, there's a nice orange dot on 4904 where that's located on the map. And then if I look at the document called Site Plan, it looks like, it looks like the water filtration, if I'm reading that correct, is on a different lot, which appears on the site location map to be 5920 Interlocken. Is that, am I, is that correct, or am I missing, you know, this in my area? That is correct. Okay. How does that work? I mean, are these, so I assume the applicant then owns both lots, obviously. Are they, are, are those lots now going to be considered one lot? Or is there an easement? I mean, what, like, like, could the 5920 lot ever be separated from the 4904 lot, in which case the 4904, because the 5920 lot is providing the water protection? So I'm just wondering what prevents 5920 from being separated from 4904? Maybe I'll stop there.
Their intent is to combine both lots so that it'd be one parcel.
I don't know. Is that part of, is that, would that be part of the approval process then?
You can make it a condition, but that was their intent, and they, they are intending on doing that.
Okay. I don't know. It's just, it's just something that struck me. I just wanted, well, thank you. I think that was everything I had. Does anyone, any other commission, anyone else, any other commissioners, any further questions for city representatives at this time? Well, maybe we'll come back. Ross, thank you for joining us, by the way. Would the applicant like to speak? This is your opportunity to tell us about what, what you're doing, and we, we're grateful for your being here.
Well, first of all, only one correction. The address is, Ian, you are correct, it's 4904. The initial address, I don't know where that came from. Early on, you used a different 4909. But as far as we're concerned, I just want to thank you guys. It has been a lot of work to get to this point, and we greatly appreciate everybody's efforts. And so thank you.
Engelsma, excuse me. Any, any commissioners have questions for the applicant? I just had one. I, I, it's kind of a comment more, but it appears that, you know, as Ross mentioned, you're putting the water filtration under a sport court. I thought, I thought that seemed like kind of a savvy thing to do. I mean, do you have any, any thoughts behind that, or?
Well, it's genius thinking.
It's just genius thinking, yeah. Problem solved.
Maybe, I thought that was pretty smart. And anything further? Because if there isn't...
I, I just, I'm John Boyer on the builder.
Oh.
I just, I just want to make a note. In our narrative, or in our introduction into the process, we did state right up front that we wanted to combine those two lots. That that is part of the, part of this whole, whole process. So I don't know whether that's not a planning commission issue, or if it is, I don't know, but it, it is the intent.
Well, thank you for, thank you. That, that's, thank you. Well, we'll, we'll get to that in just a moment, but that, I'm glad you mentioned that. Does the applicant have anything further? Any applicant or any representative have anything further you'd like to say? Well, so in that case, as I mentioned at the outset of our meeting, this is a public hearing, which allows any member of the public to call in and speak for up to three minutes. We, we ask that you call 1-800-374-0221. Enter conference ID number 8729768. Press star one on your keypad. You'll be placed in a queue. We, we are operating on a little bit of delay, so we'll let people, you know, we'll give people an opportunity. If you do call in, you know, we always, we appreciate everyone that calls in and their feedback. You don't necessarily have to, if someone else said something already, that you don't have to say ditto, you know. We hope that you'll have something new, but we do appreciate everyone who called in. So with that, turn it over to city staff. I guess it's Dan? Do I, are you the person running the?
Karen Emmerich, it's Jennifer. You still have Jennifer for tonight?
Okay.
This is Communications Director Jennifer Bennerott. I do not have anyone on the intercall right now. Because there is a slight delay with the broadcast, I would recommend we wait a minute or so before moving on. My clock shows that it's 7:26, so I'll let you know when we have a speaker or at 7:27 that you can move on.
Sounds good. I need to correct my own record. I just realized that it wasn't Dave, the judge, the judge that I worked for, or, you know, he didn't say Dave, it was Mike. Mike was the name he used for everybody. It's all, just had to correct that record that nobody cared about. But thank you, thank you, Jennifer. Thanks. Communication Director Bennerott, I see it's now 7:27. Do you think it's okay for us to move forward?
Thank you.
Could we get a motion then to close the public hearing? Anyone?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Thank you, Commissioner Barubi, for made that motion. Commissioner Strauss for seconding. Liz, I believe you're, you're, were you able to do a roll vote for us?
I am. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Karen Emmerich.
Well, and the next phase will be Planning Commission discussion, or motions, or further questions. Do any members of the Planning Commission wish to mention, you know, give any opinion about this, or ask any further questions? Commissioner Bennett?
I have a real one, finally, so that's good. No, I just, I really appreciate the incredibly thorough investigation and vetting of this proposal. It's in a very complicated area, as they know, so with engineering support, I'm fully on board.
Commissioner Bennett? Commissioner Strauss, do you have something?
No, I, I would just, exactly what, what Jimmy was saying. I think the weight of, the weight of the, of the engineering staff report sort of speaks for itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners wish to ask any further questions or make any comments about this, or make a motion for approval or non-approval? It's a theoretical possibility. Commissioner Barubi, did you have something? I, I'm just seeing if people take their mics off mute. That's why I, I'm just noticing. Sheila, do you have anything?
Yes, I, I move we propose the, that we approve the proposal as submitted.
Second.
Commissioner Barubi, Commissioner Bennett. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Agnew?
Yes, I do have a question about this. Are we then including in this motion the fact that they would be joining the lots? I know that they had written that in the initial proposal, that that would be a part of it, but I didn't see it outlined as a part of either of the variances. And so I just would like clarity on whether or not that's in this motion to approve the variances.
Commissioner Barubi, I suppose I have a question for you, really. Do you include, are you willing to, do you include that in your motion?
I, I'm willing to include that in the motion.
And then Commissioner Bennett, are you, is your second, you're seconding the motion? Is that still valid then with that included?
He's muted.
You're muted.
I missed the first half of what you said. Commissioner Agnew, if you could repeat that.
I was just seeking clarity on whether we were including in this motion the joining of the two lots into one single lot. And it sounds like Commissioner Barubi said, yes, we can include that in this. And so the question to you is, do you still second that motion then?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm not, I'm not sure if that's, I guess, in my purview or purview tonight. And maybe I'd want to hear, uh, just an opinion from city staff as to whether that's necessary or not before I say yes or no.
Commissioner Acker or Planning Director Teague, would one of you like to respond to Commissioner Bennett? Planner Acker, Planner Teague?
If not, I totally get it.
So the question, Carrie, are you on, is that you?
Yeah, I can take a shot at that, yeah, I think it's, it's reasonable for you to request that, otherwise potentially they could sell that lot and we may need an easement for drainage purposes over it, should it go to another property owner, so I, I think it's a reasonable condition, especially given that is the applicant's intent.
Okay. Guess that was adequate, I'm satisfied, so yes, I will second the revised, um, motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett, is there any further discussion by the planning commission? Commissioner Agnew?
Yeah, then I do want to discuss that part of it. Um, I'm wondering if we, if, if that wasn't included in any of the communications to neighbors? So actually, I'm going to pose this as a question. Um, was that a part of any communication that was sent out to alert neighbors of these variances that we would potentially be considering the joining of the two lots? That's to staff.
It was indicated as part of their application, it's not, um, requested variance, but it was their intent and it was very clear on their application as well as their write-up. It was also part of the Better Together Edina information, so, um, that was included in it.
Perfect, thank you.
I'd say that the, the paperwork does show the two lots being the subject matter of the discussion.
Yes, they were very intentional on indicating that they had every, that was what their goal was, that they were going to combine both lots.
The drawings are very clear that.
Well, the write-up as well and also, um, the verbiage on their application indicated that.
Are, Kate, are you good?
I am, that concludes my question.
Thank you. Any further discussion by planning commission, any further, Commissioner Bennett?
I guess I just pose this back to the, I guess, the future homeowners of this. I mean, does that sound reasonable or what, or is there some unknown reason that we don't, that hasn't been discussed that you would come back?
No, you're correct, that is our intention.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Well, going once, twice, three times. Uh, Liz, would you do a roll vote, please?
Thank you, Commissioner Strauss.
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Dear Navarov.
So passes six to zero, I think, believe, tonight. Planner Acker, what, what's next on the approval process for this, uh, property?
Well, if there's no, if there is no appeal within 10 days, then the variance stands and they're able to apply for building permit.
Okay, well, thank you and good luck.
Thank you guys very much, I appreciate it.
Uh, so our, our second public hearing today, our second of two, is for a variance for a residence at 309 Dearborn Court. And, and, you know, Planner Acker, it's to you again.
Yes, it is, thank you. Uh, this is a variance from the basement requirement, so very similar to what we heard previously for a new home to be built at 309 Dearborn Court. The subject property is at the end of Dearborn Court cul-de-sac, it is the vacant lot, um, that has the dot on it. Excuse me. The adjacent lot at 315 currently has a house on it, it was recently built, so the subject property is the last vacant lot within that subdivision. There's a highlighted portion of the subdivision showing the vacant lot. This is the proposed house that they would like to build, they actually submitted for permit application and unbeknownst to them, they can't just build a slab on grade home. Um, there is an ordinance provision that requires the 50% basement. So, um, the intent of the property owner was, they've, has, they've held this property um, for many, many years and now, um, they would like to build a house that offers one level living, um, an age and place situation. Uh, the, the house meets all of the other ordinance requirements with the exception of the 50% basement rule, it meets all subdeck requirements. Lot coverage, it's well under the lot coverage requirement. This shows the home that was recently built, that's adjacent sort of to the southwest and then uh, the house that exists to the north. So you see the relationship between the two homes. This is the house, it's slab on grade, so this would be the foundation plan. The main floor, the only floor of the house. And then, um, the, the front elevation of the home. The home is much, uh, shorter in height than what the maximum would be, the maximum is 35 feet. The ridge height of the home is 27 feet, it's actually lower than homes on either side. Uh, rear elevation, and then we have the two side elevations of the home. And then some photographs of the cul-de-sac as it exists today with the home that would be to the north. And then you can see the corner of the house that's been recently built to the south. Uh, this is the vacant lot where the home will be located. The house that's recently been built to the south, and then, uh, trying to show what it would look like in context. Uh, the house, both homes on either side are going to be a little bit higher, um, in height than the subject home. So, um, it does meet all of the ordinance requirements. Really, the only issue is the basement, um, requirement, something that the homeowner doesn't need. The house offers everything that they need on the first floor, there isn't really, um, a basement that is needed. Uh, granting the variance will be in keeping with the character of the surrounding properties, the proposed home design reflects, uh, the character of the neighborhood and height, scale and mass, it meets all of the other requirements. Uh, it's not, the, the home's adjacent, um, it's a two-story home, this home is a, a single-story home. Uh, it is much lower in ridge height elevation. The new home will enhance, enhance the property and, um, the surrounding neighborhood. Staff does support, uh, the request as submitted. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Planner Acker. Do any commissioners have questions for, for the city staff?
This is Commissioner Agnew. I'm sure you're flipping through, so you didn't, didn't see my hand. Um, so the one question I have, um, is really around, and I know, you know, past situations where we've reviewed, um, variance requests such as these, we have had a location within the home that is still used for storm shelter, uh, storm safety. Can you show or outline, um, where within these plans, uh, that is accounted for?
It's not a requirement, so it's not something that I, I think they have to have, I guess that really is up to the property owner. So I, that would be a question of the contractor or the representative, but as far as I know, they haven't designated a specific area on the house for that.
Yeah, I think my questions, we, we looked at a project, which I would think is very similar, was it on Brittany?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, wasn't it part of the discussion that this basement requirement, you know, is, is perhaps something to be considered, you know, whether it's, whether it's something to be kept in, in the, you know, the building ordinances or I mean, didn't we talk, I mean, that, that's sort of like a future subject? And, and I, and I would imagine all of the other, the discussions that we went, um, some of the traditional rules a basement provides, you know, um, they're engineered around them and stuff like that, and I'm assuming that's the same.
And I, I think with, with more modern construction techniques, it's, it really isn't necessary and there is, there has been a, a desire for patio homes, slab on grade homes, um, so it would make sense to take a look at it.
Well, I know Jimmy had a very good way of summarizing it too, but, yeah, so I'm seeing this as, as for all purposes, the same kind of review as that one that we considered. And, uh, I just wondered if you had, if there was any specific things where you thought maybe it was different, but, okay, that, that forms my opinion, thank you.
Commissioner Bennett, you heard your name?
I did, um, and I was going to say to Commissioner Agnew based off of, um, I guess some old literature I saw, as long as you have a desk, I think you can just duck underneath that, so. Um, assuming they have a desk, I think that's good for storm safety.
Or a bathtub.
Yeah. I'm kidding, of course. But yeah, no, I, I guess this is just a comment not specific to this project necessarily, but yeah, there is, there is no reason that they need to have a basement, that's just a function of, uh, an old code that we have, and I think we've talked about eliminating that and and if this keeps coming up, I would propose we get that plan sooner than later. But I'm in favor of this project, I, I think this is where people are going with mobile medicine and just aging in place. Um, and I guess this being a vacant property makes it even easier. If they were on like a narrow lot and they were like filling the whole lot to achieve one level living versus having a lift in there or something like that. Maybe be opposed, but this is kind of a no-brainer, full support.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Do anyone else have any further questions for, I think we're still on staff?
I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's all good. The applicant, so if, if we can always ask more questions of staff and it's happened regularly. Would the applicant like to, or the applicant's representatives like to speak about this project?
Uh, good evening, um, I'm Steve Schmiders, owner of Wooddale Builders. We've been, uh, in business for 47 years, we've done a lot of things in Edina through the past years. But through the years, going all the way back into the shore view, back into the mid 80s because of water tables, we've been built numerous patio homes. And today, we're building them in Eden Prairie on a new site, uh, Stable Path. Very desirable type of product, uh, very much in demand. And this particular client did see our project, our, our model in Eden Prairie and fell in love with it. And based on her, uh, needs, that's what she would very much like, thank you.
Any questions for the applicant, thank you, thank you very much for that input. Any questions for the applicant? I actually do have one question for you and, um, this is an I-know-a-guy kind of question, so somebody, you know, somebody who bought a, a house that was already built and in existence for a while. Yeah, this is somebody with just tremendous energy. And at one point, he decided that he needed a better basement than what was than, than what was in the house he bought, so he actually dug it by hand. He dug significantly by hand. Um, how did, how did, how does that, you ever see people do that, buy houses that don't have basements? And then wish to add a basement or wish to add to their basements?
Um, no, I have not. No.
All right, any, any further questions for the applicant? Well, thank you, you know, we, we may come back, maybe things future, so again, um, this is a public hearing and we're conducting it by Zoom, so if people want to participate in this particular matter and give input on it, they can call us at 1-800-374-0221. Enter conference ID number 8722, excuse me, start over, conference ID number 8729768. Press star one, you'll be placed into queue. Uh, City Communications Director Bennerott, who may be at her last planning commission meeting. So with Edina, but she has a new staff member, but this could be her commencement exercise with the planning commission. Will monitor people, uh, who wish to make, provide testimony on this matter.
Dear Navarov, members of the commission, I'm feeling pretty lonely tonight, I still do not have any callers on intercall. My clock shows that it's 7:46, because there is a slight delay with the broadcast, I would recommend we wait until about 7:47 before moving on. I'll interrupt either when we have a speaker or at 7:47, whichever comes first.
Jennifer. Well, it's 7:47 and we just aren't going to be exciting enough to keep Jennifer Bennerott on the point, working on the planning commission. She's going to go back to the city, work on the city council matters where she's going to have more excitement. Um, are we good to move on?
I believe it's safe to move on now.
Okay, um, so we do need to have a formal resolution to close the public hearing, could someone make a motion, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
So that was Commissioner Agnew and Commissioner Berube motion and seconding. Uh, Ms. Olsen, would you do a, a roll vote, please?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Dear Navarov.
So that brings it to the planning commission for discussion. Um, Commissioner Bennett did share some of his thoughts and would you like to add anything or, or, you know, or some, Commissioner Bennett?
Sure, thanks, I, you know, I might save some of this discussion till after we make a decision. Uh, it kind of just relates to some of our work session and I just feel like this is a shift in culture and just changing the ways in which we live and we ought to respond to that and I I think we're doing, we would do so well by approving this tonight.
Bennett, do any other commissioners wish to say anything or ask any further questions or make a motion? Commissioner Berube, are you, would you, do you have something?
I was just going to say, um, you know, this is an example of probably an outdated, um, stipulation on the books that, you know, will likely get to next year on our work plan. Um, it seems that there's no reason to have a basement. And in this case, there's actually a reason not to have a basement. And, um, you know, if anybody should be concerned about it, I would imagine it's the lender. Because if someone were concerned it was going to affect the value of property, then they wouldn't, um, provide a mortgage. So that's certainly out of our, uh, realm of discussion. And so I'd be willing to, um, make a motion unless anybody else wants to discuss.
Cherries, we can still conduct a discussion even if you make a motion.
Okay, so I will go ahead and move that we, um, um, adopt this. Um, sorry, I lost my train of thought, that, that we, um, accept the, the proposal as written.
Thank you, Sheila.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any, like to second it or have further discussion, Commissioner Agnew?
I will second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Berube and a second by Commissioner Agnew, does anyone have any further commentary or questions? All right, Ms. Olsen, could you do a roll vote for the approval of this, uh, variance?
Thank you, Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Aye.
Karen Nemirov?
Aye. So that's, uh, full approval. And then, is it correct that that's, you know, i- it could be, if it's not appealed to the council within the next 10 days, it's a, it's an approval, and they move ahead with a building permit? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, congratulations and good luck, I guess.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, that closes, that closes our public, the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. And I actually, if you bear with me, so that, next we come to reports and recommendations. Are there any? Always the gating question. Chris, Carrie, are there any reports, recommendations we should, we need to?
Nothing for, nothing for tonight, no.
Correspondence petitions, are there any for those, of those tonight?
There are none of those either.
Chair and member comments, which I guess maybe, you know, literally is member and chair comments. Do any members have any comments? Commissioner Bennett, Commissioner Strauss?
Jimmy, I got a quick one for...
Oh, I like it when everyone talks at the same time. Commissioner Strauss?
Okay. Carrie, um, just, I'm making notes here. Our next planning permission meeting is November 8th or 9th? Is it, I'm, I'm trying to...
November 18th.
18th. And that's where we can anticipate reviewing the two projects, the two big projects on France Avenue. Okay. And, and the thinking right now is that there would not be a work session?
Correct. We will work, correct. We'll work on rescheduling that work session.
18th, so. Okay, thanks.
Bennett, thank you for, you had something, I believe, Jimmy?
Yeah, I, you know, we've seen this specific one a couple times recently in a row. It's just, it's a reminder for, you know, something like this was created at one point where it makes sense. But I think we should expedite our decision on getting rid of this ordinance fast, because, I mean, this is a waste of time for a residence, and I, you know, they, they're sitting there trying to like rationalize their decision, you know, and the ordinances should help foster the future of Edina that we want to see, and this is just dragging us back. So if we, I don't know if we could just like tack on to our next work session, like, hey, can we just make a quick vote and eliminate this one? I'd, I'd be very happy to do so, uh, quickly. Um, and then, lastly, by the next time we see each other, we'll all have had the opportunity to officially vote. So I just, uh, encourage everyone to get out there and vote. We got some council members to either support or bring in new blood, so, so it's a big one. Locally, and obviously, globally, nationally. Thanks.
Bennett, anyone else have anything further? Carrie, do you, maybe you and I could talk offline about, you know, the, the ordinance? I think, I think we've had that on our work plan. We can...
Yep, we can talk offline.
Um, so, then, like I said, one other thing, I, I, voting, so, uh, yeah, no, I don't need to, forget it. I'm gonna pass. That's all I had. So, uh, anyone else, so then, then it gets to, uh, staff comments. Any, staff have anything?
None this evening.
Takes us to adjournment. It's not even 8 o'clock. The same, also, you know, you know, same, if anyone else has something else, can we get a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn?
I second.
Uh, Commissioner Strauss motion, Commissioner Agnew second. Uh, Ms. Olsen, can you do a roll vote, please?
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner...
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Karen Nemirov?
Aye. Thank you, and good night to everyone.